So, welcome everyone to Grand Lake Board of Trustees Meeting for Grand Lake Township for Tuesday, May 3rd. If you could all rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Robertson, would you care to call the roll?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Here.
Myself, here. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven members present, a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I would ask, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Dr. Raridan?
Moved by Raridan.
Supported by Trustee Hugo.
Trustee Hugo, supported. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Seven, seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Anybody care to make public comment? Okay. Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board, and I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. So, motion by Ms. Hugo?
Motion by Hugo.
Supported by?
By Fike.
Sure.
I saw his hand, that's right.
Nope, that's right.
Consent agenda. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Under old business, we have first strategic plan update item is infrastructure and the new DPS and fire facilities. We have DPS Director Sears with us this evening to speak about our progress.
Good evening. In your packets, you have the updated strategic plan for the construction of our new fire station number one and DPW service buildings. So, so far, what we've completed is we are in the process of hiring a project manager for the project. Basically, what we're doing is we're hiring somebody to look out for the best interest of the township while myself, my staff, and the fire department staff all do our daily jobs. We're hiring a firm that can manage the budget, manage the schedule, manage the other consultants such as the architect and engineer, any kind of contractors. They're going to be our watchdog over the site and over the entire project. They're going to report back to us whenever they need to and on a routine basis also. And then, they'll also be reporting to the board whenever we hit some milestone dates. Tonight, on the agenda, we do have, we're asking for the approval to enter into a contract with a consulting firm for project management. We took RFPs in early March. We held interviews in April with three of the six firms that submitted RFPs. We had a very good response from six different firms. Three of them were architectural firms and three of them were project management firms. So, we were able to narrow it down. After our interviews, we, as a group unanimously, came up with this firm that we're recommending tonight, Plant Moran, to handle the project management. They had a very impressive resume, and when we interviewed them, they knocked it out of the park. They were very professional, have a lot of experience in the municipal field, especially in Michigan. And they were just the most qualified firm that we saw. So, we'll be going over that tonight. From here, we'll be going through our spacing assessment that we completed in 2016 or 17 for the fire station and for the DPS department, so that we can basically narrow down our needs for the new buildings. And then, the project manager will help us narrow down the scope of the project, and then, we can hire an architect and an engineer from there. So, we're pretty excited that we're finally starting to get this off the ground and hopefully make some progress on it. I can answer any questions that you might have about what we've done and what's to come.
Anybody have any questions on project?
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure we'll speak more of it here.
We will.
When we get to that. Thank you, Mr. Sears. And we also have on the strategic plan update, Item B, Community Vitality, and for lack of name right now, is our north portion of the township here, north of Hill Road. We did have another meeting with the business owners or property owners along, I believe we invited Melissa, the Saginaw Street, as well as Dort and Dort. And so, we actually had a very good meeting. We basically came to the conclusion that we do want to form a corridor improvement authority, and TIF, so that we can go after funding for the area. So, we are going to ask to start putting together some work on that. We haven't even, I know Mr. Laddie drew up some papers and we had them in packet, I think, in the past, right?
Yeah, and we talked about this, I think, maybe a few months ago. And so, yeah, so that's great news. I think that's a good idea. And I did, I did say, one of my correspondents, that it would be, we'd like to see the township and maybe the stakeholders come up with a kind of a draft of what the outline of the authority would be.
Right.
Because we need to establish that. And then, I'll get working on, on some of the legal aspects of it. But, that's, that's good news.
Yeah. So, we're throwing around some different names for the area or the district. So, I'd prefer to stay away from the north end, but, so, we've been putting together some creative ideas, and we'll take any ideas anybody else has here as well. But, we did talk a little bit about signage, that, you know, for example, I think everybody's seen the signage that we've been looking at for markers entering the township and what have you. And maybe having something special that says, you know, whatever name we come up with, you know, Business Corridor, what have you. But, I think, you know, we brought, we have the brochures, for example, for the DDA, and the same type of marketing effort could go towards the north part of the township as well. I think just forming a group and bringing people together, I think we already see some synergy happening. Mr. Roberts, anything you want to add that you're, you're part of helping make that group work, so? Anything to add? I know they're, they're excited about our plans for the campus here as well, you know, the business owners in the area.
Yes, they are. The only thing I wanted to add is that we discussed signage for their buildings, so some different changes once we develop the corridor improvement authority, some different signage, some things that they can do on their own buildings, some changes they can make. So, they have to follow the signage ordinance within their corridor authority and not necessarily what the township-wide signage ordinance. So, it just gives them a little bit of flexibility, so they can improve their facade of their businesses.
Really, the first step is going to be forming that group before we can start doing anything special here, so. So, I think it's good that we, we had consensus at the meeting that definitely they want to move forward. So, any questions or thoughts? And actually, we had some real good owners at the meeting for some of the buildings that I know some of our board members had expressed concern about, so just by virtue of having the meeting, we're getting some, some people here and interest in doing some things with their buildings that maybe previously they weren't interested in doing. So, I'm looking forward to some progress in that area. So, thanks, Ms. Roberts. Okay. Under new business, we have a report from our fire chief or fire department, year-end report.
I'm under pressure to see, I'm sorry about that. Uh, thank you, this is for?
We're not watching the clock tonight.
No, no. Just, somebody else might be. Thank you very much for allowing me to come up and do a presentation on the year-end report for the fire department. I know it's a little bit late after 2021 to have this out, but unfortunately, some things dictated when we could get things done, so. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time going through a lot of this, the information. I just want to bring out a few things. In 2021, we went through the reorganization of the command staff of the fire department. We hired Deputy Chief Kent Miracle into a full-time position, who was taking on to the operational role of overseeing the fire department, allowing me more time to spend on getting these structures built that we're looking at for these next year. In 2021, or, I'm sorry, 2021, yes, we responded over 695 fire calls. Eleven of those actually being fires, 11% being fires, and you have a breakdown on page seven of all of the incidents that we had. We look at the day of the week that incidents occur. In the month of June was our worst month, 90 incidents occurred. Wednesday is the busiest day for the fire department. We had 121 incidents that occurred on Wednesdays, and at 5:00 in the evening is when we're the busiest of 52 calls on average that we answered. So, in the month of June, Wednesday at 5:00, don't be around Grand Lake. Some good news is the major saves versus losses. We were able to save 90% of the total property value that, when we were called to those incidents. A lot of times, neighboring departments require mutual aid or assistance to fight fires. Over the last five years, the fire departments helped 47 times, and we request, or we requested 37, 34 times help, and we provided 47 times. In last year alone, we provided 17, or 17 incidents, we provided mutual aid to neighboring departments. This last year was one of the most interesting times for mutual aid, where they actually requested our ladder truck to go out to the city of LaPierre and to help them with that large fire that they had downtown. It was an interesting morning, and I received a call from Davison's Fire Chief asking what our ladder truck is doing, getting to come out and play in LaPierre, so, you know, we'll be out there. Some other good news is we averaged our response times to 7 minutes, 48 seconds to all incidents in the township. But, one of the key information that I want to bring out is on pages 14 and 15, and I'm going to the state on this, is the Community Risk Reduction Program. In the last year, the beginning of this year, Michigan has experienced 144% increase in the number of deaths occurring in fires over the previous year. It's a dramatic increase. And all I want to get out to the residents is all you have to do is give us a call. We have smoke detectors, we have carbon monoxide alarms, that we will come out and set up in your home. There really should be no reason why this occurs. And it's been occurring predominantly between 6:00 AM and 6, or 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Males, unfortunately, are one of the targeted areas here, in between the ages of 40, or 40 and 69. So, there's a lot of deaths occurring at that point, but just give us a call, that's all we ask. We'll come right out and we'll install them for you. We'll put them up properly wherever they need to be. Our Fire Marshal, Chris Keller, reported that a total of 48% of the businesses inspected required a follow-up inspection, unfortunately. You know, they had one inspection, found a minor violation, we talked with them, we had to go back out and do another inspection. But, in another instance, we had 16 complaints from residents. All of them were taken care of with simple instruction to the neighbors or the residents and the business owners. Again, the fire department is very strong in our public education. Last year, over 700 children received instruction on fire safety in their, at schools in the month of October, and we had the National Night Out here that we shared with the police department. We were able to receive or obtain a smoke trailer from Davison Fire Department. That night alone, we had over 500 people that went through that, one event. There was just a great number of people attending. The last portion that I'm going to leave you with is the staffing of the fire department. We have 37 sworn firefighters in the department. 212, or 210 years of experience is in the command staff alone, with 203 years being made up throughout the rest of the firefighters. So, very experienced fire department, I'm very proud of them and what they do every single day. And so, in going into 2022, one of the things that we recognized in reorganizing, organizing the command staff, was that we needed to have a plan of exactly what we're going to be doing. And at its creation, we created a strategic plan. The firefighters, the command staff have just embraced the idea behind it and have taken it on and ready to work on it. So, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Miracle to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good, uh, let's see, this will work. Hopefully, it'll work. It worked earlier today, so.
We got Murphy's Law here, too.
Maybe?
Sorry about that.
That's a good start.
Just went back.
Yep. Okay. And, I think we're? Maybe? There. As the chief said, that this year with the organizational change, we started doing a strategic plan, and it's something that the fire department, we haven't done before, and we thought it would help us, guide us to where we need to be for the up-and-coming future for the department. Five things that the department, when we got together, the five things that the staff felt was important was facilities, safety, communication personnel, and budget. These were the five elements that they felt were the most important for the department to not only grow, but also to meet the needs of the community in the future. Facilities, which we've already covered, they, with the chief and Jeff Sears, they did a space, space of needs and established project design teams. They're working on the hiring of the architectural firms and project managers. The funding for the projects, and hopefully, we'll have the building phase will be up and coming very near in the future. Personnel, communication, they felt was a big issue. Communication with the staff and with the chief officers throughout the department. It was kind of, everybody was just doing their thing, and there wasn't a lot of really good communication between everybody. The other part of it was, was the key elements were, they wanted external communications, so the chief could actually get out into the community and visit and do different things. They also wanted the monthly report, is what they asked. We started doing a monthly report to the whole staff to keep them up to date on what's going on within the department, the response times, their turnout times, and just give them general information of the day-to-day operations that with the part-time staff was kind of like missing out on some of it, because they're not there every day. They also, chief has actually started submitting the end, month-end reports, the same report you guys get, staff is now getting that. We also do performance reviews. We've always done those. Difference now, we're going to do quarterly reviews, because they wanted feedback from their reviews. We always give it to them once a year, and then, we didn't talk to them until the next year on what their goals were, how did they meet. So, now, we're going to keep them up to date, where they're at, and what progress they've made during that time, and anything we can do to help them meet their goals. Personnel was establishing a retention and recruitment program. Finding firefighters right now is not the easiest thing to get involved. So, with the recruitment part, we've done career days in the schools. We're doing a ride-along program, which has actually seemed to help. We've got a couple of applications out of that so far. Reinforced professional appearance of the department. We're just looking at uniforms updating, some things, making sure everybody's getting what is necessary for their uniforms, so everybody's looking professional. We're also looking at possibly exploring providing medical first responders. And as for like, when ambulances are more than eight miles out, or for PI accidents, or sometimes we'll have to wait 11 minutes, we're waiting for an ambulance to get to the scene before we can even do anything. So, we're exploring that to see where or what the need is for that. Career milestones, anniversaries and things like that with the department. We actually have started that this year with recognizing years of service and different things that people have achieved since they've been on the department. Leadership program, whoa. Something just, is that me?
Might be unplugged. Did I run all three? Let's see if it'll come back. There we go.
There's. A leadership program, we're going to establish a leadership program, which is taking the firefighters and teaching them and actually working with officers and getting some leadership skills and classes. And I think that would help also with the retention program, keeping people, give them something to look forward to, so they're not feeling like they're just going to be stuck in the one spot for the rest of their career. Budget, the seeking opportunities for grant funding. I know we've already got a few grants out, and I believe we heard, I think it was today, for the AAA grant, that it's moved on to the next step. So, hopefully, keep our fingers crossed on that one. The other part is ensuring vehicles and equipment, firefighters, personal protective equipment replacement, continuously got to meet the National Fire Protection Association requirements. They set expiration dates or life expectancy on equipment, trucks, pretty much everything, so that stuff's got to be replaced on a regular basis. We're also establishing a replacement, along with the other part of the personnel, establishing a uniform replacement schedule, so we can actually get uniforms, get them replaced and replenished. And determining needs of the, the equipment needs for annual budgets. And as for equipment, that is, it has to meet NFPA compliances, stuff that's worn out or broke over the, over the period of the year. And that's pretty much, that is our strategic plan for 2022, so.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Fike.
The part about the ambulances, you know, we've talked so much about ambulances, and I just wanted to make sure I heard, you know, this, you're just looking at this, but would it be a situation where if the, it's been determined that the ambulance is X number of minutes away, and you guys, let's say, and gals are on the scene, that you could provide first aid? Is that where you were going with that?
Initial first aid, yep.
You can't do that now?
Um, that's a good.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't.
Yes and no.
All right.
We're able to provide medical care for an individual who has life-threatening injuries.
Let's say a guy's having a heart attack or something. Yeah, yeah.
We can do anything like that, but if you have fractured bones or anything like, something like that.
Yeah.
No, we're not supposed to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions concerned? Yes, Mr. Fike.
I guess just moving off that, so are you talking sort of like how the sheriff's deputies are sort of, some of them are cross-trained as paramedics as well? Is that what you're talking about, or?
Just, we're, we're looking at?
Lesser stuff?
Lesser. Lesser, yeah. We're looking at very, the basic, the basic, basic, to provide some type of care while we're waiting for an ambulance.
Okay. No, it looked very good. Response times, everything. I appreciate it. Yes, Clerk Robertson?
Why does, why the, why is Wednesday the busiest day of the week? Is it just?
Good question.
It's hump day? I don't know.
Hump day, yeah.
I don't know.
No idea.
I didn't think this one seems consistent throughout the information provided, and I was just curious as to why it might, that it was Wednesday rather than Tuesday or rather than Thursdays.
I really have to start breaking down a little more information about the why Wednesday is so busy, but it's, you would think maybe.
Have you found that to be consistent?
Yeah, you'd think a weekend.
Have you found that to be consistent through the years?
I believe last year was Wednesday or Thursday, I'm not sure, so.
Okay.
I'd have to research that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, the number of firefighters we have is, you know, mentioned that we are trying to recruit, how far away, I mean, is it probably an ongoing effort? I imagine we're never completely.
Yes.
Satisfied with how many we have, but what would be an ideal number for municipality our size? And where are we right now, total? You think you said 30?
We're in 37.
37.
The grand national average is, should be about 1.5 for every thousand residents, so with our present population, we'd have to increase by 17. And now, so right now, we're in about, a little less than one.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
So, we need lots of folks to sign up to coming out?
We do.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate the report and the great job. Please take our thanks back to your department, and we appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I noticed in the news this past week, even saved a family of ducks.
We did, and it was our first ever rescue for the year, so.
Yeah.
More to come.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Next on the agenda, Item B, the board will consider a motion to approve the hiring of Plant Moran as the project manager for the public services and fire station building construction, and authorize the township superintendent to negotiate and execute a professional services contract as outlined in the township purchasing process. Mr. Sears?
Thank you. Earlier, we updated you on our strategic plan, the progress that we're making towards the construction of the new facilities, and we discussed the hiring of a project manager. Like I said, back in March, we went out for bid. At the end of March, we received back six RFPs between myself, Chief Perdatt, Superintendent Limata, Deputy Chief Kent, and my assistant director. We were able to narrow it down to three firms that we thought were the most qualified. We brought those firms in in April and interviewed them, and I'm pleased to present Plant Moran to you as our frontrunner tonight that we're recommending to give a contract to for project management. There's a lot of things that stood out about Plant Moran to us that the other firms didn't have. For one, we all know that Plant Moran is, you know, known to be an accounting firm. Plant Moran Cressa, who is the project management arm of Plant Moran, is the building management, project management portion of that. They have all of the resources of the accounting firm available to them that will aid us tremendously throughout our project. There are several different aspects to what they're going to be doing for us, right down to accounting software, reconciliation of budgets, contract negotiations, and just overall making the construction manager, the architect and engineer accountable. They're taking accountability off of us and putting it back on these people that are going to be building this project for us. And they really knocked the socks off of the interview. You know, they talked about how they have a strategy to influence costs very early on through strategic planning. If we have a solid plan, whenever we first begin designing this, and we know what we want, we truly know what we want, then we really have the power to control cost. And, you know, they said they're experts in it, and I believe it, because this is what they do for a living. They talked about agreement managing contracts. They changed the standard architect and contractor contracts that they have, and they put more aggressive language in it, like I said, to hold them more accountable. They have terms in there for cost savings and trying, trying to control change order management and stuff like that, so that they, they're again, watching over our project when we're here doing our daily jobs, basically. They have a very impressive resume. They've built fire stations in West Bloomfield Commerce, Royal Oak, they've built municipal centers in Northville, and they've also done some extensive work for Oakland County and McComb County, and that's just the tip of the iceberg for the amount of references that they gave us. It was next to none in the six RFPs that they, that we received. Nobody had. to control change order management and stuff like that. So that they, they're again watching over our project when we're here doing our daily jobs, basically. They have a very impressive resume. They've built fire stations in West Bloomfield, Commerce, Royal Oak. They've built municipal centers in Northville. And they've also done some extensive work for Oakland County and Macomb County. And that's just the tip of the iceberg for the amount of references that they gave us. It was next to none in the six RFPs that they, that we received. Nobody had the municipal experience that Plant Moran has. They're local to us. Local, I mean, they have, they have facilities here in Genesee County. Their main office is in Southfield, which is where Cressa works out of. All the other firms that we interviewed were either from Indiana or Lansing. The one firm from Indiana did have one employee in the state of Michigan, but they had never done a big project in the state. We were going to be their first one of this size. So we decided they didn't have the resources that they could allocate to us and really give us the attention that we think that we're going to need. So they are going, their team at Plant Moran includes project managers, architects, engineers, accountants, attorneys and construction experts. They have everybody in the field that we could possibly need that'll be monitoring our project. They have somebody that visits the site a couple of times a week. That's a construction manager. And that person built commercial buildings for most of his career. And he does nothing but visit sites and make sure that things are being done correctly, that they're being done to our specifications. They'll meet with us weekly here at Township Hall and they'll come and meet with the Township Board whenever we request them to. So what we'll do is whenever we get the project underway, we'll set up milestones where we will have them come and do presentations and say, this is where we're at. This is where the project is heading. This is where our budget's at. They'll manage all of our invoices, all of our pay apps, and they'll just, they will make this project go very smoothly. We're very happy that they gave us an RFP for it. Like I said, we had some very good competition. And what Plant Moran just stood out next, you know, next to none for us. I can answer any questions you might have about the process, about the firm. They did say, and what we did hear overwhelmingly is that our initial budget that we've had in mind for, you know, five years now is probably too low considering today's construction world. And our timeline is probably a little too aggressive. We want in our building, so we put an aggressive timeline together. And they said, you know, we want to do this right. So let's make sure we're giving ourselves plenty of time to plan for everything. So, and we heard that from every firm. So we expect that moving forward.
So our building committee met again today, consisting of Trusty Fike, Trusty Raridan myself. And we had pretty much consensus, we did have consensus that we want to move forward with this firm. So from our committee, we, we also feel that this is where we want to go. The resume was very impressive. You know, you mentioned a few of Macomb County, you know, Department of Roads, Commerce Township Facility, West Bloomfield Fire Department, City of Royal Oak, City of Farmington Hills, City of Westland, all did very big projects for them. And again, they, this portion of Plant Moran is dedicated to this type of work. This isn't something they're doing as a sideline. This is actually the type of thing that we were looking for. We don't have the time or everything else for our staff to oversee a construction project of this magnitude. And we want to make sure it's done right the first time. And the other thing you mentioned, Mr. Sears, was, you know, their financial aptitude. They're able to look at things like grants, able to analyze, you know, funding, which way would be best for us to do it, to use our cash or to bond it, or if there's other low interest ways that we could finance it. But that's their expertise. And so beyond just the construction expertise, the financial expertise could save us significant resources as well.
Correct. And that's what Superintendent Limata liked most about this firm, is that they have the ability to give us recommendations on how to finance these projects. They have a lot of experience in it. They were one of the only firms that said that they would put a lot of effort into that for us. They would put together a solid financing plan for us and, and help us achieve that. We won't be on our own with that, basically, which is a very good thing to hear. Because this is a daunting, you know, amount of money that we're about to spend. And we need that kind of assistance. And one thing that stood out to me that they said, and they were the only firm that said it, was they solely represent and advocate on behalf of the township. They're not architects. They're not there to do the architectural work. They're not there to do the engineering work. They're there to watch out for our best interests, which is, will help us all sleep better at night, since we can't devote forty hours a week to this by any means.
Mr. White?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the hiring of Plant Moran.
Okay, supported by Trusty Raridan.
Motion by Fike, supported by Raridan. Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're just starting into the project. So it's going to be a while for those that think we're going to have a new fire department in the next couple of months.
It'll be a while.
It'll be a little while, but we're on our way to getting something done. So I know our, especially our firefighters are probably getting anxious. They've been very patient, but it's very cramped quarters that we're working out of currently. So it'll be nice to have that moving forward. Might even help us with our recruitment, right?
Guaranteed, well.
So item C, the board will consider a motion to approve a three-year bi-annual preventative maintenance agreement with Kennedy Industries for five sanitary sewer pump stations and one water booster station and authorize the township superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents. Again, Mr. Sears.
Kind of got a run of agenda items here for a little bit. Got a lot of business going on right now. So before you tonight is a contract with Kennedy Professional Pump Services to do preventative maintenance on like, in the agenda packet. Some of our most used or high volume sanitary sewer pump stations in our water booster station. Basically what they'll do is they'll come in twice a year and they'll go through all of our pumps. Once a year, they pull each pump from the sanitary sewer stations and they do the testing. But they check all the electrical connections. They make sure everything's running, you know, within the tolerances that it's supposed to and that they're efficient. Recently, we had at our Woodfield Lift Station, which is one of our highest volume stations. Unfortunately, we found two pumps were running very inefficiently. And we've had to do almost $40,000 worth of repairs to them. We had to rebuild them. Had we not caught that, that could have been catastrophic to those neighborhoods if we had some sewer backups due to that. So we've had Kennedy in this program before. They've been our contractor. They do very good work. The reason we select Kennedy is because they work on a variety of pumps. They have the capacity to pull the pumps and go through them very quickly, where some of the other companies in the state, they only work on certain kind of pumps. We have several different types throughout our system because they're designed for what they serve. So Kennedy's a very good company and I think they'll serve us well.
Mr. Raridan?
I didn't see the cost in there.
You're right. It does not have the cost in there. I apologize. I don't have that.
Twelve thousand, three seventy a year.
Twelve thousand, three seventy a year.
Thirty-seven, ten for a three-year agreement.
Yep.
In here. Okay, it's in the briefing.
Right.
It's in the briefing, okay.
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 Any questions, Director Sears?
Is a motion.
Motion by Dr. Raridan.
Motion by Raridan?
Supported by Trusty Fike.
Okay. Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so item D, the board will consider a motion to approve a quote from Scaf Carpet and Furniture for the amount of $10,682 for carpet replacement in the Township Auditorium and Conference Room A and authorize Township Superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents. So, Mr. Sears or Ms. Roberts?
I got it. Okay.
All right.
It's pretty self-explanatory. We're getting ready to undergo a renovation in this room. It's really the last space that we haven't replaced the carpet. And I know Melissa's been working pretty hard with Greg, who's my assistant director, to put everything together. We're going to be redoing the carpet. We're going to be redoing the diaz, the furniture. There's a lot that's going into it. It'll be, it'll be a much nicer, more updated space when we're done. The carpet is the first step to get approved. Once we get that scheduled, we'll work on the diaz. We'll, we're going to do some painting and some other stuff. So Scaf was the lowest price that we got. There was one that Karen's carpet, I believe, did not respond to our request. So they've done all the rest of the carpet in Township Hall. They do a really good job. We're going to be doing carpet tiles in here. That's what we've been going with throughout the rest of the building so that we can replace them when we need to. So.
There's a time period where we're looking at not meeting in this room too, right?
Correct. There, there may be one or two meetings that will have to move to the police station. But we're still working on those logistics, trying to limit that as much as possible.
Okay. Yeah, we could meet in the fire department building, but you're going to have to move the trucks out.
[laughing]
So, okay. Anybody have any thoughts? Yes.
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hugo.
Motion by Hugo.
Support by Trusty White.
Supported by White. Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Boy, this whole agenda is D D or the.
Well, not, not the whole thing. I didn't have a presentation.
You know, give short shrift to the fire department. But so item E, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of eighty-eight census water meters and forty-two water meter gaskets from Aetna Supply for the amount of $14,387.50 and have the Township Superintendent execute all related contracts and documents.
So in our budget this year for the DPW, we have phase one of our water meter change out program. Right now, there is a shortage of water meters in industry wide. So we're looking at starting slowly. It may end up being, we had originally planned for four phases in four years. We have roughly eight thousand water meters in the township. With the industry the way it is now, it's very difficult to get meters. So we're not going to hit that mark this year at least. So we're going to go section by section. We'll probably be here with more orders as we get them done. We're starting in section one, which is the most northern and eastern section of the township. And it'll be a good area that we can test our processes and how our scheduling is going to work, so on and so forth. And this order should take care of every home in that area.
Very good. Okay. Any questions, Mr. Sears? Anybody care to make the motion? Okay, motion by Trusty Fike.
I'll support if you wish, Mr. Supervisor.
Sure.
Okay. Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, the board will consider a motion to reinstate utility bill late fees.
So for the duration of the pandemic, we have not been assessing late fees on water and sewer bills, simply because of the economic impact that it had on many families throughout our community. We feel that now is an appropriate time as we're somewhat coming out of the pandemic and that we can reinstate late fees so that we can hold people's feet to their fire whenever they're delinquent on their utility bills. I think it's been almost two years that we haven't assessed them. So we feel that now's the time. And the late fee, by the way, is 10% of the utility, the delinquent amount of the utility bill. It's assessed after the twentieth of the month. This will take effect, bills rendered at the end of March, end of May. I apologize. So this, the end of this month.
Any thoughts? Concern?
Myself. What, what's the normal percentage, I guess, pre-COVID of late fees? How many people pay late?
Um, you know, I don't have that information, but it's not very high. You know, there is a, there's a lot of people that would rather pay their utility bills on their taxes. So there's a lot of people that don't ever pay their water bill and they just let it go to their property taxes. They, I'm sure they realize that they're paying penalties on that all year long, plus they pay a penalty when it goes to taxes. It's not a very high percentage in our township though. We're, we're pretty fortunate. But I don't have the percentage.
I guess, yeah, I mean, has it gone up? Is it still higher than it was pre-COVID?
It's not actually. Our delinquencies never skyrocketed throughout the entire pandemic. We were monitoring that and we, we never saw a big problem with that.
Okay. All right. Does somebody care to make a motion? Okay.
I'll make the motion if you wish.
Okay. Support by Trusty Fike.
Very good. Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item G, the board will consider a motion to approve KCI for the printing and mailing of new voter ID cards as required by state law in the amount of $12,788.61. Clerk Robertson?
Yes. The, the item here before you is required, as I think I've mentioned to you previously, we're obviously in the business of issuing new voter ID, ID cards. This is routine every 10 years because after, after redistricting and the reapportionment, obviously county commission, district lines change, state representative lines change, congressional lines change and numbers change. So this is routine. The, the firm in question was able to meet it, meet our obligation, our responsibilities there and provide this service within the timeframe that, that we need to get it done as expeditiously as possible. And I ask for your support.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Hugo, you'd like to make the motion? Okay.
Okay, this is seven G. Motion by Hugo?
Support by Dr. Raridan.
Dr. Raridan, very good. Okay, Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Item H, the board will consider a motion to approve the renewal of BSNA software in the amount of $35,412. For those that may not be familiar in the public, maybe even here, BSNA is the software that pretty much is the backbone of most of our departments. Everything from tax assessing to utility billing to, you name it, probably every department.
Building.
Building, cemeteries. So without that software, we'd be scrambling. So, so this is an annual fee here that we need to pay to keep that software going.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Support by Dr. Raridan.
Dr. Raridan, very good. Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Very good. Trusty Raridan?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Okay. And item I, the board will consider Resolution 22-6 to adopt language for the mosquito control millage renewal to be placed on the August 2022 election ballot. It states that show the limitation of the amount of taxes which may be assessed against all property in the Charter Township of Grand Blank, Genesee County, Michigan, be renewed and the Township Board authorized to levy an amount not to exceed .2317 mils for a period of 10 years from 2022 through 2031 inclusive for the purpose of providing funds for mosquito control. The estimated revenue this millage will produce during the calendar year for 2022 is $360,000, $360,075. This is a. This is a renewal of the mosquito control millage that expired with the 2021 tax levy." Any questions? Yes, Mr. Fike?
Is that the only thing on the August ballot, or are there other things?
Well, we're gonna have, it's going to be a general election.
Election for governor of the House.
Oh, so lots.
Yeah, so there's gonna be lots on the ballot.
May.
Yeah, she made, May is, you know, there's no election tonight, so.
Right.
So August is...
A packed ballot.
Correct.
It will be. We have to do it if we want to continue with the millage.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, Mr. White supports it?
Mr. White supports, supports, okay. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Future agenda items? Yes, Dr. Raridan?
Could we look at the meeting?
Yes. Yep, so one of the things Dr. Raridan brought up was that the meeting at the end of this month appears to be the day after holiday or weekend here. Let me just bring up my calendar. So right now, it looks like our board meeting is set for May 31st, which is day after Memorial Day. Wondering if we could move that to Wednesday, the first? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Otherwise, because if somebody's out of town for Memorial Day, I'm not sure you're gonna wanna meet the very next evening.
I'm, I'm thinking, if we wanted to do it, to pay bills, I think that's the big deal, right?
Probably the biggest part of it.
Maybe we'd wanna do it the week?
Before?
You know, just before, just to have a short little...
Well, does that work better, Ms. Roberts, you think, the week before, or?
Maybe. Are you talking?
Thursday before? So maybe instead of on the 1st of June, having it on the 26th?
I have no objections, I just, does that satisfy the bill paying needs?
Could we do it on that Wednesday before, the 25th? I just have something on that Thursday that's gonna be very difficult for me to move, but I could probably not be here, but... Does the 25th work for everyone?
Yeah.
If all we're doing is paying bills, if we're missing a few, it'd probably be okay. Let's, let's make a motion then to move the board meeting from...
May 31st?
May 31st to May 25th.
So moved.
Okay. 7:00 PM still.
Motion by Raridan, did I see?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by?
Myself.
Supervisor Bennett? Okay, Trustee Hugo?
Trustee Hugo? Yes.
Very good. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven, nothing.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hugo, anything with Planning Commission to report on?
Our next meeting is this Thursday. I have nothing to report.
All right. Mr. White, anything with ZBA?
No update.
Mr. Fike?
No.
Dr. Raridan?
No.
Kilmer?
No.
Robertson?
Just a comment, not on any clerk-specific item, but you and I have had conversations over the last few days about postings from citizenry about roads and road repair and the need for patching. And it seems to me that maybe we could have an informational meeting. We'd invite the Road Commission to come in to talk folks, explain to folks how road funding happens, how these decisions are made. I also think it would be very valuable for our citizens to, to become acquainted with the County Board of Commissioners, which is the most invisible layer of government that we have here in Genesee County. I can say that because I served on it for four years, 20 years ago, and I know it's rather more invisible than it should be. I know I tried not to make it invisible, but, but perhaps folks need to be acquainted with the County Commissioners, since they are the ones that make appointments to the Road Commission. And I know that during my time on the County Commission, the two issues that I got the most calls on from constituents were always about roads and drains, roads and drains, roads and drains. And so I think there will be some value in us doing that, so that the citizens know that these roads that are in Grand Blank Township are not under the purview of the township. They are not in our jurisdiction, and they need to focus their energies elsewhere as far as making sure that their elected representatives know that. So that's as much as I'll say.
So I have invited Mr. Pavandi, the Director of the Genesee County Road Commission, to join us at our next board meeting. And I'd like to see if we couldn't put together kind of a town hall meeting with regard to streets and roads, where we do invite the county commissioners, maybe even the state representatives for our area. But to, you know, identify how things work, I think also we need to, I know Mr. Sears has been working with lots of neighborhoods that are interested in paving their streets, but what I'd like to do is to see if we couldn't record part of the meeting, when we have some of these special guests, and actually post it on our, our website and social media, at least that portion of the meeting, so that people that are interested in having their streets paved have a resource to go to. A lot of time, people don't wanna read through pages and pages. And I know, Sarah, you, you undertook it in your neighborhood, so you're kind of very experienced with, kind of wading through the process from the resident side of things. And, you know, if you're not here in the building and know all the ins and outs, it's, you know, it's totally a blank slate when it comes to, how do I get my streets paved? And so in some ways, you know, the township is always the first phone call some people make, because we're the closest to them. Unfortunately, we're not always the ones in control of things, but, you know, laying out for them, when you want your streets paved, takes, you know, six months to a year just to get an estimate on what it would cost. Then you have to have petitions, and, you know, you go through the list, and they're like, oh my gosh, I've got all this we've gotta do just to pave our street? Well, unfortunately, that's what it takes. It's not just a phone call to Mr. Sears, or myself, or one of our board members, saying, hey, I want my streets paved. And unfortunately, even getting the potholes fixed right now this time of year isn't that easy either. The asphalt plants hadn't opened as of last week. It looks like they may be open this week, because I do see them paving some things. I haven't started to see the pothole being patched, but we've also had a lot of rain lately, too, and they, I'm not sure they wanna do it in the rain, because it just washes right out. But I think it'd be helpful for all of us, but also for the public, if we could identify how these work, and I think, make sure everybody is on the same page in terms of streets and roads, so.
All right, I'd just say that.
Yes.
There seems to be a lot of social media anger over the roads. People are not happy, and I think it would be wise to give them good information.